Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is April 23rd. If you're watching live on April 23rd, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our calling number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch us live on Verizon or Optimum Cable TV. And you can pick up a live webcast and shortly after the meeting, an on-demand webcast at Our next regular meeting, our meeting schedule is changing a little bit. We are in the midst of the last pieces of our budget discussion and need to act on that budget before the end of the month. And so, we're going to schedule an additional meeting that isn't part of our regular schedule. That is next Monday, April 30 with a work session at 7:00 PM and a regular session at 8:00. And then, in the month of May, because we have the intervention of Memorial Day, our meeting schedule has changed as well. We're going to meet on Monday, May 7 at 7:00 PM, not 8:00 for the regular meeting, the prime purpose of which is to move the required resolution for our check schedule. And then, we'll be back on Monday, May 21 at 7:00 PM with a work session followed by a regular session at 8:00. And then, in June, back to our regular schedule. So, if you guys can get that updated on the calendar on the web, that would be great. But, just to recap, our next meeting is going to be primarily to act on the budget. That's a week from today, May 30 at 8:00 PM. And then, we'll have meetings in May on the 7th and 21st, and then back to the 2nd and 4th Mondays when we get to June. I have a whole bunch of announcements, but let's do public comments first, since I think we have one.
Hi, Juliette Sesslin, 23 Grove Street. I'm just, I have questions just about the budget process in terms of, you vote next Monday, so at what point are all the budget numbers finalized, discussed, et cetera, so that we know what kind of numbers are going to be put forward?
Well, so here's the lay of the land. As you know, the draft budget has been posted, was posted back in March, and we've been working our way through that and met with each department head. I would say, so far, we have tinkered with a bunch of things. There haven't been major changes. There are a couple of items that we're going to be discussing in work session after this meeting, a couple of items related to the police budget, various other matters. I think there's the possibility that we might make a change that would affect the budget, you know, to the tune of $100,000 or something like that. Nothing at the moment is in discussion that would be more than that. But, our draft budget will then get posted with the revised numbers as backup to the agenda for April, which folks would have a chance to see. But, what I would say is, our current budget comes up with a tax increase of 1.15%, and I don't see any material change in that, if any, although we certainly have been in the midst of moving some, save a little money somewhere, and in some cases, moving it to another budget that feels underfunded. Did you have something specific you were...
Well, yeah, I was just, you know, when we did the presentation, there was a number of 125,000 for the PCTV slice. So, I just wanted to better understand what went into that number in terms of the contract number versus insurance and any subscriber fee payments. Because it's just one big number, and I just want to understand that what we proposed as a contract number is being considered.
So, it's certainly is being considered, and we'll be grappling with that to be, to understand whether we're proposing any changes in that and come back to you within a couple of days.
Okay. Yeah, and for the benefit of, I think, Nicole and Joe who weren't at that presentation on the 9th, if either of you have questions specifically on our budget, feel free to talk to me or Shane directly on that.
Yeah. One thing I was going to do, and I meant to reach out to Nick and didn't do it yet, is if you guys could also forward us the expense side of the budget, that would be a helpful thing, just to make sure we're, understand the whole thing.
Can we talk about that, I think, when he was here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did Nick not send that?
I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it either.
Yeah, so that would be helpful to get.
Okay, we can send that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Was that it? So, before you leave, I had an announcement, but while you're here, and that would be the right time. Saturday night was the annual PCTV Benefit Gala honoring Ben Schiefer, with also special recognition of Billie Jean Sorensen, who had been one of the founding board members. So, congratulations on a successful event. Congratulations to all of you. And Shane, I know you and Evelyn helped put together the amusing video roasting in an affectionate way. Ben, did I see you have that up on the web now?
I do.
So, it is your opportunity to see a whole bunch of folks wearing amusing costumes, and I recommend it to you. But, congratulations to you.
It was fun.
It certainly felt like a good event when I was there.
And thank you for being there.
Yeah. So, congratulations on that, and thanks for that venture, which I know takes an awful lot of making it happen work in order to make it happen, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other public comment of any kind, or call in number 769-1677. Okay, so, I had a raft of announcements, which I'll try to rattle through quickly. First is a whole series of events that folks should get on their calendar. As I mentioned, the last time, the Recycling Committee is doing as they have before, a collection of sports equipment that will then be given away to folks who could use it at Pleasantville Day. So, Saturday, May 12, down in the Henkels Lot, that's the parking lot adjacent to Parkway Field, just before you drive into our Public Works Lot on Village Lane. That's Saturday, May 12 between 9:00 and 3:00. We encourage you to clean out the basement and the garage with any kind of sports equipment you have no longer got any use for. The proviso being, they cannot accept skis, snowboards, or helmets. So, give away your stuff on Saturday, May 12 between 9:00 and 3:00 at the Henkels Lot. Come back to Pleasantville Day on Saturday, May 19, a week later, and pick up anything you might want. If you or your child has outgrown their baseball bat or lacrosse stick, give it back and come get a bigger one. So, as obviously is the case, Pleasantville Day is Saturday, May 19. We're due for good weather. Our Pleasantville Day Committee has been doing a great job organizing a great event. As you know, it's had renewed energy in the last few years, and we anticipate that will continue, so that's on May 19. Memorial Day is May 28, and as we always do, there will be a ceremony that starts up at the War Law One Monument at BRS, a parade, and then a ceremony down at Memorial Plaza. So, we encourage any folks who are around to participate. And then, on Friday, June 1, is the annual Pleasantville Fire Department Parade. And a few weeks later, on Saturday, July 14, the Pleasantville Music Festival. So, get the, to PleasantvilleMusicFestival.com. The announcement of the lineup is going to happen later in April. We encourage you to buy tickets early and often. Couple of announcements I wanted to make. I attended last weekend over at Pace University, their annual student-run Relay for Life, which raises money for the American Cancer Society. Congratulations to all those young people who organized a great event. First time this year it was outside. The weather gods cooperated, and really quite a remarkable thing. Special shout-out to Professor Melissa Corden, who has been a key, key element of this. Not only just a great spirit behind the whole thing, but a great force bringing so many students involved. She is moving on to a new position elsewhere, so we just wanted to send her off with our thanks for all that good work she has done. Farm Market's outside in the Memorial Plaza, as you know. And then, I had a couple of other things to report. Maybe Eric could shed more light on it. We have two reasons that your travel around Village Roads may get held up a little bit. Con Ed's undertaking a gas main project, and the Village is undertaking a water main project. You want to shed light on that?
Yeah, the water main project is inserting a redundant line, so it protects the system in case we have a catastrophic break in the water main, which happened a couple of years ago. So, that was much needed, being funded through our Water Fund fund balance, so we didn't go out to bond for that.
So, that's kind of Church Street between Broadway between Church and Lake?
Yes, yes. And there's no, there's going to be no road closures due to that work as well. And then, the Con Ed work is a gas main replacement. Their hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, but they have limited work outside of the rush hour as well.
So, that's starting in Thornwood at the Sawmill and Marble Avenue, headed all the way in to, what, to Pine Street, and then there's a gap, and then they're back right now, have been working at the corner by Jean Jacques.
Correct. Around the corner, and then would stop eventually in front of Key Foods.
And that goes till July-ish?
Hopefully, yes.
So, that does involve off-hours, some lane closures.
Yes, yes.
And they were working Saturday as well, so.
They are.
It's six days a week.
I would only ask if we can get them to make sure they post a flagman at that intersection if it looks like they're going to close for a while.
Yeah.
I got caught in that, and the traffic backed from really almost where the blinking, the neon landing light flashes at you in front of Wood and Fire, back to the intersection of Jean Jacques. And folks were all turned around. They were trying to turn around, they were, and they were closed probably, I'd say, a good 15 minutes, but trying to get a backhoe to turn around. If they're going to do that, I don't know if it's going to work or not, but maybe ask them to put a flagman down at the intersection.
Okay. The whole road was closed for 15 minutes?
Well, no, no, our lane, going toward Orme was closed, but that meant no one could get through, you know, within one cycle of the light.
I mean, they have to have a flagman anytime they close a lane.
They should.
Well, they did where we were, but what they didn't do was put one back at the intersection because the light got on. Of course, it got all screwed up. No one could get through the intersection.
That's, we can reach out to Con Ed.
So, all right, those two locations, the old village church to Lake and Marble Avenue.
And I should, I should also mention, we've given them, you know, a variety of Saturday dates that they should not be working and will not be working.
Because of events.
Because of events.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Pool registration starts online on April, it started online on April 16, so you can sign up to join the Pleasantville Pool, which we very much encourage you to do. You can take a look on Facebook. We've made some further upgrades to the dining area, have extended it by 10 feet, taken down the fence that was between the eating area and the pool, and replaced it with a zigzag dining bar. So, I think it's really, really nice upgrade, and we have a new operator in the concession that we are continuing to work with. I know there's been some talk about the menu, which we'll, we've fed back to the operator. So, I do think it's an exciting time. If you drive past the pool, you can take a look at those improvements through the fence, even before we open. Please consider joining the pool. We very, very much try to make the pool operate on a break-even basis, and it would be great to have more members to do so. Congratulations to Will Promisell, who is a Pleasantville High School student and Eagle Scout candidate for the Pleasantville Boy Scout troop. He has an Eagle Scout project to fundraise for installing defibrillators at our Pleasantville Fields. Village is helping him with that, ASO Dance Club as well. Will had a pasta dinner at the Presbyterian Church last night, and I can report that it was one of the grandest pasta dinners I have attended in such a setting. You expect kind of straight down the middle, and Will insisted by all reports to have not just linguine, but tortellini and ravioli and quite remarkable stuff. So, thank you to Will Promisell for pulling it together, and I gather he raised well over $2,000 for that event. So, a great event, and one of the ways in which the Eagle Scout projects benefit all of us. I mentioned the PCTV Gala. Congratulations to Ben Schiefer, who is a longstanding figure at PCTV and at the Burns and around Pleasantville. Congratulations to him. And have I gotten through them all? No, one more. A few weeks back, I attended a fire department ceremony honoring Roger Limkey, and this past Saturday, a fire department ceremony honoring John Perrino. Those two Pleasantville fixtures were both being honored by the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department for 50 years of service to the volunteer department. They're both figures well-known to many of us. Roger was a longstanding Village employee, working at a DPW department, is also a Vietnam War veteran, and could just as well, and will doubtless in the future, be honored for extremely longstanding service to the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps. So, congratulations to Roger, 50 years of service to the fire department. Fast forward to John Perrino, same story, well-known to many. He and now his son are contractors in the Village and have played a long role in the reviving of so many things. I pointed out that after 50 years of service, he almost certainly reported a period at a fire that was occurring in something he built, so. A great guy, had extraordinary service, and I was happy to appear on both of their behaves. Then, the last thing I had on my list, in case anyone else has any, if I haven't used up all the oxygen in the room, is there has been plenty of discussion about the state-sponsored scheme to allow people to make contributions that could be deducted as charitable deductions that would then create an offset against property taxes, this being an effort to circumvent the recent change in federal state law, in federal law, that capped one's deduction for state and local taxes at $10,000. So, we've all been in a waiting game about what this all might be. I know the same is true for every jurisdiction, school, district, municipals, towns, villages, et cetera. Some further guidance came our way today about how this all might happen. There remain some significant questions about whether this whole thing will pass muster with the IRS. A whole list of questions on our side about how it would be possible for us to manage it. Do you want to add anything to that question?
Well, I mean, we move forward with levying taxes on June 1, which creates a variety of issues for us. I mean, we split it up into two dates, but at this point, we don't want to advise residents to wait until the second payment, which is what, December 1? We just don't have enough guidance at this point.
Well, so we got a little bit of guidance about the resolution that might be required to set up this entity that has to be set up, but there are a whole series of steps that would have to be taken to create an entity that would accept these payments.
Yep.
And there are accounting problems and challenges and all of that. So, bottom line is, this government, like I'm sure every government, is looking to improve the options for our constituents in any way we can. It's just not clear what that means in this circumstance, especially since there's so many questions remaining. So, stay tuned, we'll report as further news develops. I'm sure that will be a subject of significant discussion at NICOM in a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else have announcements to make? Come on.
Nope.
Nope.
All right, I'll say something. All right. Just a couple of updates, but the Climate Smart Community Task Force has been meeting on a regular basis and is making progress, working towards putting together a report that, first of all, does an assessment of the carbon emissions, both of the municipality and the community as a whole, and then looks into, first of all, what we are doing currently to, that may address our carbon footprint and things that we can address possibly going forward. So, that's moving along, and I can have some more concrete information about that soon. The other thing is that I'm also on a steering committee that the library has put together to address the ways in which 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th graders in particular fit into the library, because there have been some problems over the years, both with that sort of in-between, neither fish nor fowl age, sometimes being disruptive in the library, but also the sense that they are perhaps not sufficiently served. So, that's been progressing in an interesting way. I recently hosted a roundtable at my house for 3rd and 4th graders and their parents, and the 3rd and 4th graders had some very interesting suggestions. So, I think that some exciting things may be coming down the road for the library.
Thank you for that. And then, I should point out, we also met in work session prior to this regular meeting with Ryan Lambert, representing the Recycling Committee, to discuss a revision of the proposed plastic ban, a plastic bag law. It is a modification of a law that was enacted in Suffolk County, countywide, that became effective in January 1 of this year. So, the current model in the draft that we discussed with Ryan calls for a 10-cent fee on any carryout bag. As reported previously, a number of categories exempted, including dry cleaner bags, things that, things like bags that produce or deli items would go in. But, the idea behind it is to establish a 10-cent fee on carryout bags, and then after an 18-month period, ban the use of non-reusable, single-use plastic bags. And that tracks relatively closely with some differences, the law that was passed in Suffolk County, countywide. As you may have seen, the county legislature here in Westchester has raised the prospect of a law with similar contours, and then today, the governor proposed an action that might be statewide that would be related, but it sounds like it might be different in a number of respects. So, there's some more details to be worked out, and then we're going to have our Village attorneys review it, but I do think that it is likely that in the coming weeks, you'll see us post a revised law, somewhat different from the one that we posted the last time for a public hearing for a public comment. All right. With that, let's go to the Resolution 75, Nicole.
Oh, I'm on the wrong page. Okay, thank you. Resolve that the following budget amendments are hereby approved as listed below. Appropriate fund balance general fund in the amount of $54,917 from the Snow, Sand, and Salt account. The usage exceeded the estimates, we all know how that came to be. In the increased revenue and expense general fund, the amount is $16,780. Panther Club fees, that's for part-time expenses in the Panther Club.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, it just makes clear how much the budget can vary depending on the weather. Sand and salt alone, we exceeded our budget by $55,000, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 76.
Resolve that the pre-check register dated April 23, 2018, covering check numbers 89320 through 89424, is hereby approved as listed below, from the General Fund, the Water Fund, the Capital Fund, and the Refuge Fund, a total of $248,749.99.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the check register? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 77, Joe.
Resolve that the pre-check register dated April 23, 2018, covering check numbers 89425 through 89427, for pre-pay of fiscal year 2019 expenditures, is hereby approved as listed below, from the General Fund, $15,090.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, this reflects expenses for the music festival that have to be in the next fiscal year budget that starts June 1, and as a result, is a separate check register. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 78, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the following donations. Should I list them, or just?
Yeah, I think you should.
Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce for Pleasantville Day, $4,000. The Arbin Group LLC, improvements to Park Bridge at Parkway Field, $1,500. Kathy Dinkle, Patty Dwyer Tree Fund, $100. Sir Speedy, Patty Dwyer Tree Fund, $100. The Glass Onion, Patty Dwyer Tree Fund, $50. Aardvark Pet Supplies, Patty Dwyer Tree Fund, $20. Edward and Lynn Russell, Patty Dwyer Tree Fund, $100. An anonymous donor, Patty Dwyer Tree Fund, $120. Brian and Joe McGowan, Clinton Street Center, $50. Beth Tesler, Clinton Street Center, $100.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, several things to say. First is, thank you to all these folks. Quite a number of people have made donations to the Patty Dwyer Tree Fund that was associated with the online signup for her party, and the accounting is coming back from Eventbrite on that, and you'll see that next time. Be assured that we do have your donations that were made online, as well as a couple of additional checks that have recently come in that were too late for this list. If you are so inclined, Kathy Dinkle, leader of the Unification Committee, is seeking additional donations. The more money she is successful in raising, the bigger the tree will be, and Patty Dwyer deserves a big tree. A special shout-out to the Pleasantville Chamber of Commerce, $4,000, as they have contributed in the past to the success of Pleasantville Day. Just one of the many ways in which the folks in the Chamber of Commerce help keep these community traditions alive and help them prosper, so thanks very much to them. And thanks to the Arbin Group, which is an important Village company down on Marble Avenue. They assisted us in building the bridge that many of you may have crossed from the parking lot to Parkway Field. It used to be kind of a single-file Indian-style bridge, and a little rickety at that. It is now a wide and sturdy bridge, so thank you for their assistance. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 79, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the appointment of Jeanette Barbero as Recreation Assistant, part-time for Panther Club, according to the job code, at the rate of $20 per hour, effective April 24, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 80.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Village Administrator to sign the Pool Concession Stand Agreement with TNT Dining LLC, 1257 Brentwood Drive in East Stroudsburg, Pennsylvania, for the 2018 summer pool season.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, as I mentioned, we have a new operator at the Pool Concession. These are folks that run their own business, but are also, became known to us because they're supervisors of the contract food service over at Pace University. This is unassociated with that, it's a separate company, but we've been very much impressed by their professionalism, and they run similar kinds of concessions elsewhere, so. All in flavor? In flavor?
He did that on purpose.
Very nice.
I wish...
With one note, that we're still going back and forth with them on some details, right?
Sure we are, although none of them affect this agreement.
None of them affect the agreement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 81, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Recreation Department to waive the 2018 pool membership fees for volunteer firefighters residing within the Village.
Is there a second?
Second.
Happy to assist and to thank the folks who get up in the middle of the night when we need help. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 82, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees, in accordance with Village law, certifies the amounts of unpaid water rents due from Village property owners, and hereby authorizes the Village Treasurer to levy unpaid water rents to the 2018-19 tax roll.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, that's a government-y's way of saying, if you don't pay your water bill, it ends up added to your tax bill if you live within the Village of Pleasantville, in order to secure our rights to get paid for the water you used. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 83, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following Pleasantville High School students as unpaid interns from May 11, 2018 to June 11, 2018. Gabriel Healy to the Finance Department, Ian Ward to the Justice Court, and Gabriel Feinhut also to the Justice Court.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Thank you to these young people. Happy to have them here. Steve?
84.
Yeah.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the Amendment of the Village Administrator's Contract for Eric Morrissey, dated January 6, 2018. Paragraph 6 automobile. To state in lieu of a Village vehicle, the employee will receive a vehicle stipend of $3,600 per fiscal year for use of employees' personal vehicle. Stipend payments will be distributed equally according to the fiscal year bi-weekly payroll schedule. Such payments shall commence June 1, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for this, Eric. When we originally negotiated his contract, the arrangement is that we would provide a Village-owned vehicle for his use because of the responsibility he has. He's proposed this as an alternative, which I think probably inures to the benefit of the Village and the taxpayer. I thank you for that. And as he increasingly carries around his young children, it will keep Cheerios out of a Village vehicle, too, so.
That much is true.
It's a win in every respect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Joe, 85.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the Village Attorney to proceed with the settlement of the certiorari petition...
with the settlement of the certiorari petition by Bennison Capital Partners LLC, as designated on the official tax map as section 99.14, block 1, lot 79, as follows. For the years 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014, tax reductions as listed, tax assessment reductions as listed in the chart in this resolution, with a total refund of $70,297.04. And further resolve that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refunds in the amount of $70,297.04 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this resolution and the next two to follow, which are also tax certs, are backed up by memos, confidential memos to the board advising us on the legal aspects of this and supporting the resolution that we propose here. This particular property is the property that is currently being redeveloped by the Toll Brothers Company, but it was owned for a period of time by Bennison Capital Partners. They grieved their taxes while the property remained in its prior use with two older 1950s-era office buildings, and this is a resolution of their tax certs from those years.
And Mayor, if I could just say, on this one and in these other resolutions, particularly with respect to commercial properties for the benefit of whoever's watching, something that's been said many times but bears repeating, that these tax certs do not reflect a mistake or a problem that the village has caused by over-assessing properties. Frequently, they are the result of the system that we have, wherein, as time goes on, and we have an equalization rate that decreases, it artificially changes, you know, the tax assessment ratio that is necessary. It's a state cause, it's a systematic problem that where a commercial property over a period of years grieves their taxes. Frequently, they're entitled to a reduction based on the actual value of their property versus the imputed value. And it's a little bit complicated, but I don't
Just a little.
I just don't, I just want people to understand.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a reflection of, you know, the village assessor doing the wrong job, or misassessing, or over-assessing something. We can settle this today, and five years later, the same company, well, this company doesn't own this property anymore, but the same owner of a building can regrieve them five years later, because now the assessment is off yet again, because the system pushes it off, rather than us making some sort of an error.
And there was another dimension to this particular one, where the property and those two buildings had devolved into some state of decrepitude, and as a result
Good word.
Exactly. Try to find opportunities, you know?
Yeah. It's frustrating, but it's something that we, it's almost unavoidable.
Well, but what needs to be understood also is that properties like this and others in similar circumstances become declining assets, tax assets to the community, when the properties themselves decline. So obviously, there are advantages, disadvantages to every development that occurs, but I think I can speak for all of us on the board that preceded us, that the reuse of that property for the project being built by Toll has been a very substantial net benefit to our tax base. And it takes at least a little bit of the sting of paying this $70,000 back to Bennison, and provides a little
Little cushion.
Any further comment? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Eighty-six, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with the settlement of certiorari petition by Pleasantville Tennis Club, as designated on the official tax map as section 106.7, block 1, lot 64, as follows. From years 2012 to 2017, revised assessments resulting in additional refunds of $25,505.79. And further resolve that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refunds in the amount of $25,505.79 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
So again, it's the Willow Street Pleasantville Tennis Club, a bit of an unusual property, both based on its use and based on the fact that a significant piece of it is in a wetlands. Again, the proposed resolution here is backed up by the advice of counsel in the form of a memo. Further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Eighty-seven, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with the settlement of certiorari petition by Sorco Realty Corporation, as designated on the official tax map as section 106.6, block 5, lots 1, 2, 3, and 70, as follows. From the year 2009 to the year 2017, with revised assessments that lead to a total refund value of $16,147.67. And further resolve that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refunds in the amount of $16,147.67 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this parcel is the Mavis Tire parcel on Marble Avenue. As folks will recall, if you were here at the time, it's a longstanding business, and the building burned to the ground and then was rather quickly rebuilt. So there have been a series of challenges to the assessment that predate the fire, and then incorporate the question of what the assessment should be at the year in which the building burned down, and then the assessment for the new and more substantial building in place. Again, we have backup in the form of a reasoned argument from our attorney. Comments on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in there, that with all three of these, we've talked before about trying to understand when and if there would ever be a point when we would try to contest some of this stuff. So we talked earlier about whether or not we could get counsel in for a work session, so we could sit, all four, five of us could sit down and understand the parameters around when we, in maybe conjunction with the town of Mount Pleasant, have the conditions in place to maybe go, oh, wait a minute, right? Because I do think it's important that we understand, if that ever did happen, what it would look like.
I agree. So Judd Seibert of Keenan Bean is the attorney that manages our tax certs, along with Lloyd Tash, our assessor. So I think it'd be worth, when the dust settles, we've got enough going on in the next few weeks, but certainly sometime perhaps over the summer, perhaps we can have Judd, and perhaps Lloyd as well
Okay.
in for a work session to talk about the overall system, the way forward. And again, as Steve Riley points out, the moment where we might want to push back in the form of taking a case all the way to court. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Eighty-eight.
So do we, because of what it is, do we read this whole thing in?
I don't think we have to read the whole thing in. Use your judgment, Joe.
Why don't I?
Is it you? Who is it?
It's me.
Steve, sorry.
Why don't I go all the way down to section 1?
Whatever you think.
What do you guys think? Well, that's legally, that's legally the right way to do it.
I think that's fine.
Okay. So before I get into this, this is all about a refunding operation to call and refund bonds that have been issued by the village of Pleasantville. So, whereas the village of Pleasantville, Westchester County, New York, here in Call the Village, is considering refunding the outstanding amount of its $2,975,000 original principal amount, public improvement serial bonds maturing in 2010, I'm sorry, of 2010, maturing after October 15, 2018, and the outstanding amount of its $2 million original principal amount, public improvement serial bonds 2011A, maturing after June 15, 2018, collectively referred in this resolution as the outstanding bonds, and each has a respective series, more particularly described here in the record. And whereas the Series 2010 bonds maturing after October 15, 2018, are now outstanding in the aggregate principal amount of $2,155,000, and the Series A, Series, sorry, excuse me, Series 2011A bonds maturing after 2015, 201 ... jeez, it's a lot of, a lot of text.
June 15.
June 15, 2018, are now outstanding in the aggregate principal amount of $1,195,000, and the outstanding bonds mature on such dates each year in the principal amounts, and bear interest payable on such dates in each year, as set forth in exhibit A in this record. And whereas, section 90.10B2 of the local finance law permits the village to refund the outstanding unredeemed maturities of the outstanding bonds by the issuance of new bonds, the issuance of which will result in present value savings for the village, whereas the Board of Trustees of the village deems it in the public interest to refund the outstanding bonds by the issuance of refunding bonds pursuant to the local finance law, and now desires to authorize the issuance of refunding bonds to refund the outstanding bonds. And that's fun. All right. So now, reading the bridge into the sections, right? Now therefore be it ordained by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the total voting strength of the Board of Trustees of the village of Pleasantville, Westchester County, New York, as follows. Then there is a lot, several pages of sections regarding principal and issuance, and the events of the refunding that are possible, and all that, obligations, as further contained in this record, essentially giving us the authorization to refund these bonds in a way that allows us to save money on the outstanding principal amount going forward. That's not the most elegant
Pretty good. Is there a second?
Second.
So just to, first off, there's a perfect example of why our offspring and sometimes our spouses say, really? Why would you want to do this? So, correct me if I veer off, Eric. Essentially, our finance department has found an opportunity, along with our bond counsel, to refund, that is, fund again
Right.
money that is currently owed by the village, and end up with a more desirable rate, which results in savings. It is not the intent to borrow more money than is currently outstanding. We're going to borrow the same money that is currently owed, but believe that the moment is right to achieve savings.
And added to that, the bond counsel also told us that, of course, with interest rates starting to take up a little bit, when this money did come due, or the opportunity to refund it anytime, really in the next several months, is probably the only window we would have to capture the lower interest rates.
So the result of that is that we anticipate refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount of $3,170,000 in a single series.
Right, so we'll consolidate the two tranches into one.
Right.
See, I can talk about it clearly.
Yeah. Yeah. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Aye, motion approved.
When do we expect that that would actually be executed? How long does it take?
Four to six weeks. Yep.
All right. Eighty-nine, in comparison to that, you got off easy, Joe.
Right. This one, I know this one's almost as long as that one, but I'm going to read the whole thing.
All in.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorize the village clerk to advertise for bid for camp transportation.
Is there a second?
As further contained in the record.
Second.
Well, there's a controversial subject. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Ninety, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves a request from Pleasant Avenue residents to hold a block party on Saturday, May 19, from 4 to 7:30 p.m. Attached is an application.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just saying, Pleasant Avenue is going to have a big day, because Saturday, May 19, is Pleasantville Day, and I anticipate all of those residents will be there pretty much 10 to 4, and then they will segue back to their neighborhood and party till 7:30. Have a good time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Ninety-one, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation letter of Lucy Rizzoli, Recreation Assistant, part-time for Panther Club, job code 0269-2, effective April 18, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lucy, for your service. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. And last, but certainly not least, Steve.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meetings held on April 2, 2018, and April 9, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those two sets of minutes reflect the April 2 annual organizational meeting and the April 9 budget hearing and regular meeting. Another opportunity at the organizational meeting to remind folks that we have a new board member, David Vingamori, already hit the ground running. Welcome to the board. Happy to have you. Are there any comments or questions or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. That completes our resolutions. Is there any new business? Any further comment from the public? All right, with that, we're going to go back into executive session. We have several matters to review regarding to the budget, and then shortly thereafter, go into executive session on matters of litigation. Is there a motion to go into executive session after a completion of the work session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Thank you all. As reported, we will have a meeting primarily focused on passing the budget. That will be next week, April 30, at 8 p.m. See you then. Thank you and good night.